All right, welcome everybody. We're gonna get the meeting going. It is Monday, November 24th at 6:31 PM. I ask everybody to stay for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we'll move into item number three, which would be the approval of agenda, unless there's comments.
If there's no changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Turchi and a second by Commissioner Gurley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, now we'll be moving into item four, which is the approval of minutes dated September 22nd, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Ross Seal.
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Muller. All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Okay. Now we go to item number five, which is the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Lennox Township Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 24th, 2025, at the Lennox Township Municipal Offices, 63775 Gresham Avenue, Lennox, Michigan, 48050, beginning at 6:33 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on renewal of a special land use permit and mining permit for T.J. Enterprises LLC regarding the sand and gravel mining operation at 32680 32 Mile Road, also known as parcel ID 19060310002. On the south side of 32 Mile Road between Lowkank Road and Masalk Road, Ashok Road, consisting of 117 acres. Lennox Township will provide necessary reasonable auxiliary aid and services such as signers for the hearing prepared and audio tapes with printed materials to be considered at the meeting to individuals with disabilities upon seven days' notice to Lennox Township clerk. This notice will post in compliance with PA 267 of 1976 as amended Open Meeting Act, the MCLA 41.72A, 23, and the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA. So we're holding. Case summary.
I make a motion that we go into the public hearing at 6:33.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gurley and a second by Commissioner Turchi. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, so now the case summary.
All right, good evening. Good evening. With the absence of the engineer this evening and the absence of the planner, both out of town on pre-arranged vacations before this even came to light, I'm submitting all the information and documentation from each one of them. This evening in front of you is the requirements and requests. What I can read to you from our engineer is that they have in fact reviewed the sand removal data for the subject site dated 8/27/25, as provided by TRP on 9/4/25. The documentation is attached, that has been given out to all the commissioners. The data submitted reflects last year's removal volumes. Please note that the previous calculated volumes were adjusted in October 2024 per the actual field data received as requested by the township board. Per our removal tracking, which is attached, it appears that the current level removal volume is now at 96% completion. With that, you do have the material, the on-screen film, excuse me, the on-screen fill sand, the yards outscreened fill sand, yards, CL2 type sand, CL3 type sand, 2NF sand, septic sand for St. Clair, septic sand for McComb, the topsoil, the 6A stone, the flat stone, the pea stone, oversight stone, plate sand, mason sand. Total yardage of 101,075 yards as of August 27th, 2025, reflecting through January 24th of December 31st of 24. With that, move into the planner's statement. This is to the Lennox Township Planning Commission from Stephen Casson. Zoning compliance review, Hidden Lake's Enterprise, T.J. Enterprise, annual mining permit request. I have reviewed the request for the annual mining permit for Hidden Lake's estates from a planning and zoning standpoint. The request implies with the requirements of Lennox Township zoning ordinance accordingly. I recommend approval contingent upon compliance with all township engineering standards applicable state and federal regulations. I submit this recommendation for your consideration. Sincerely, signed, Stephen N. Casson, AICP, Casson Planning Group, LLC. With that, I'll bring it back to the board to open up for public comments at this point.
Thank you. Okay, so now we are into the public comment. As everyone's aware, there's a three-minute limit. So if you step up, you need to clearly state your name, your address, and the time when we'll begin. And at that three minutes, the mic will shut off and your time will be up. As always, we want to hear what you have to say. Please try to stick to the facts and don't be redundant if you can. Thank you.
Bruce Washington, 67330, Pashok just south of the mining operation, which I don't believe was ever classified as a mining operation. I've been coming since he first got approval 26 years ago with his one-year permit. Then when it got reapproved for each year, another permit, another permit, another permit. So I think this is the 26th permit that he did approve for. But this year it is very, very bad. The water level is down four feet from what it was just a year ago. There is no water coming in. I don't think that they're dumping water out to Lake St. Clair like they had previously, but I don't think that they probably have enough water in the depth of their diggings to really pump it out anywhere because water level is just low. But I think that at some point, when you start up with just a one-year permit, a five-year permit, 26 years now, at some point you have to say enough is enough, do the development. Five years ago, maybe 10 years ago, I saw all the plans for the development, for the houses all the way around the entire property. These houses would go right down to the lakefront that they've dug. But none of that has ever been started, even though it was planned 10 years ago. So I would just like them to quit digging, stop all the trucks in and out, level that land, there's still piles in there piled 30, 40 feet high in different areas. And it's just a mess, all those trucks. Rarely do they come in front of our house though. Most of the time, he directs them pretty well to go down to 32 Mile and across. But the problem is, is that it's just continuously digging, 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 and losing more and more water. So I think he knew that the bosses lost their water completely. They had to put in a completely new well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Danny Esper, 32,032 Mile Road. Got several questions and one thing that is bothering me. We were in here March, April, everything was okay, the grades were all in. And within days of that approval, they have run in and started digging the bank on the east side of it. They're over halfway down to the lake depth. So everything that was approved, saying all okay in, remember May, March, April, whatever it was, is all gone. How are they going to bring that back up to specs without hauling dirt in? We know all the dirt that's there has been hauled in. But we need to stop this and get it in compliance. Please. We've been to this board several times. We've been to the main board. I was here two months ago to the main board and told them what was happening on that east side. Did anybody go and look at it? No. This last comment is rude indeed. But I lay it this way, it's one of our children sitting there and you're letting them rape, rape right in front of us. Would you let a rapist rape your children without stopping and saying, "Whoa"? Thank you.
Boy, this is way up there. Okay, Bob Wigan, I represent Green Wiggers Nursery in Richmond Forest Golf Course. I am directly east of the property that you're talking about. They had been removing all the dirt along the east side bank of the pit next to our property. I realized that at one time they said it was going to be houses. Then I actually had a phone call from one of Mr. Piperzacks. One of the Piperzacks called me and says, "Would you be okay with a high-end trailer campsite area?" And I answered, "That's fine, they're gonna do something with the property." What I don't want is a big hole in the ground. Right now, we lost 40 homes to tax base on $40 million, 500,000, 600,000 other houses along that lake. That property is gone. They can't build on there. Maybe we can, nursery can, because that's how close it is now. Now, let's talk about the big hole in the ground. If the campsite goes, what are you gonna do to sit there and say that they have to come up with a legitimate plan and stick to it for the grade? I understand they want to take out a lot more soil, remove the woods, rattle the side of the golf course, and take more sand. What are you gonna end up with in this township? It's your tax base that you're giving away. Those homes were at least a half a million. They're gone. Now, what's the trailer park, what are the trailer sites gonna be like? Are they gone? What are you gonna end up with, or we gonna end up with? A hole in the ground? Somebody gonna make up the tax base? I have nothing against the Piperzacks, not at all, but I don't want a hole in the ground. I want to see a print that sits there and they stick to it with the grades. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Paul Eisen, 68111, Pasha Road. My driveway ends right where, just about right where their pile of topsoil ends. So every day when I go out to get the mail, I have to see, you know, where their topsoil pile, which isn't a big problem, except that they haul a lot of topsoil in. And in August, I sent something, sent something to Eugene with some pictures and he checked it out. He said he had moved through 300 pages of stuff and says, "Yeah, they can bring it in, but they cannot sell topsoil." No, this gentleman here tonight, what he read, said they are selling topsoil. So that, to me, there's a violation of their agreement. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Grace Eisen, 68111, Pasha. My parents owned the property at the corner of 32 and Pasha when this process started 26 years ago. And it was a diligent process and there were multiple things included in the agreement that protected the surrounding homes and properties. Through the years, the compliance of that original agreement has not been held up. And last year, the place hadn't been inspected in 10 years and it's supposed to be inspected yearly. I want to know how our township is supporting its citizens and maintaining compliance to the original agreement that was signed for this business? And when will it start being enforced?
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Washington, I live at 67330, Pasha Road, right next to the mining or the gravel pit. Well, 26 years, as my husband had said, we are here. It was supposed to be one year, then went on again and again. I had originally seen those plans for the homes that were supposed to be fine, then it turned into a trailer park. Do they really have any plans ever to, if they keep digging? 26 years cost. To me, enough is enough. They should have been here, whether, you know, here, want your mining business out of work. The planner commissioner and the engineer should have been. Reading it, 96% of what is finished, what does that mean? 96% is done?
96% of the total volume that they were allowing for the park.
Right, 96. I think it's enough. That says it all. Where's your plans? Are they UNRV, are they gonna plan houses? What are they doing now?
This is my question, my expression, I'm sorry.
Well, that's why they should have been here. They have a plan, they have a plan. Well, they should have had a plan. They should have, they had a plan at the very beginning. I stand for these beautiful homes that are gonna be next to my home. Then, last few years, it was like Mr. Wiggins had said, an RV. Now what is it? What are they gonna come up with next? 96%, I think it's enough, 26 years. 26 years and you guys are gonna let this go on and you don't even know what's going to be there. Probably nothing, if they keep digging it out. And I think it should just come to an end. It needs to move on, close it, and start having a plan of how we're gonna develop that land. Because they don't really have a plan. So that's what I have to say. 26 years, I think he's made enough money that he can move on and give back to the community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bernie Ross Seal, 25589, 26 Mile Road. I'd like to know if you speak of thought about what you're gonna do with this hole in the ground after, if they happen to walk away and leave it go up on tax sale? It'll be the township's problem. What are you gonna do, make a landfill out of it? It's about all that'll be good for it. You're gonna have to fill this hole in or do something. It's gonna be a liability for the township with a big expense. Plus you're gonna lose your tax base. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Dennis Hage, 3940, County Line. Got another rental property or so in the township. My worries is, I'm now over a ways from there. But that aquifer that flows underneath there, I don't know if it goes to my place or not. But once you contaminate it, you all pay the price for that. What are you gonna throw in that hole? Is it gonna be contaminated? Has there been stuff thrown in there? Supposedly, there's not supposed to be any fill, but it sounds like there was. Did it have contaminants in it? Has anybody done any water testing of the local wells to make sure that people aren't getting something from it or causing an issue? There's a huge liability there. The US government poisoned all the Marines at Camp Lejeune for about 15 years. Billions of dollars are gonna be settled out of that. I was poisoned out of that and I'm in on that lawsuit. So just to let you know, it's not gonna be ugly. It's gonna be real ugly if that happens. You really need to watch out for the people in the township so that doesn't happen.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. We looking for a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:40.
Support. I have a motion by Commissioner Gurley and a support by Commissioner Penal. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, now we go to 5AE, which is the Planning Commission Discussion. So we'll open it up to the commissioners.
Where do you want to start?
Go ahead, yours first.
Okay, I'd like to have a couple of questions to answer. That was brought up from the audience here and I thank you all for coming. Mr. Washington mentioned about piles again over 15 feet. Mr. Piperzack, is there piles over 15 feet?
Over 15 feet of the original grade now.
Wait.
If they read the permit, there was gonna be no piles above the original grade that they were below. We dug down, there's piles that are maybe 30 feet, but they're 20 feet in the hole. So they're only 10 feet above the original elevation. And that's how that was discussed, I think I heard 26 years ago, several times.
So that was never changed in anything? Because I remember talking with you last year over this and there were complaints over the years about piles being too high. And nothing about the grade was brought in on that discussion?
When those complaints were in, it was in the first two or three years and there was no hole in the ground yet, to upset the piles in. Back then, we did have wind issues. We battled a lot of stuff. Mr. Turchi can vote, we tried a lot of different things. Finally, we got a hole in the ground. These piles aren't sticking above the burns or the trees that are on the burns and the dust has definitely been kept at bay, especially.
Okay, Mr. Dennis Esper asked about the east side, about excessive digging on that side.
Yeah, we're digging over there. But they, to the grade for the RV resort, have been approved in 2019 by this planning commissioner. So that grade had been working from the north side around the east side. I think that's every year I come up here and say, "I want to get that town to grade so I can increase planting." So that when you open this RV resort, there's mature trees and not little tiny saplings.
And that grade is up to specs? I mean, who's, I mean, do you have verification of that? Is there a company that's come out and verified this that I'm not aware of? Or is it just your say-so?
Well, it's our say-so, but they'll have to be approved and graded before it's approved. Just like any other building site, you build a site, then they come out and approve the grades. They don't really do it as you're building.
And you're still planning on removing all the woods or you're leaving any of the woods?
No, a lot of the woods is gonna be left. There's a small corner that's coming out. Our plan is to have cabins in the trees. That grade and the trees is gonna stay. There's gonna be plenty of big buffer of trees and woods and cabins in that corner.
Are you hauling in topsoil?
We are bringing in topsoil.
Are you allowed to bring in topsoil?
Our permit and our special hand use says that there's no, nothing that says I can't bring materials.
Are you allowed to sell topsoil out of there?
That, I've never read that I can.
So if it's not stated in there, then you can just do it?
It doesn't say I can't sell stone or sand or anything. It says I'm mining and selling materials.
But aren't you supposed to sell the materials that you mine, not bring in material and then sell that material?
There's been playing topsoil out there too that we've mined off.
I know you were here once before saying that farmers give you topsoil.
Absolutely. You can go down to Rosel Road in New Haven and we probably held in, I don't know, they're gonna spend 60, 70, 80,000 yards of trail and they got a topsoil pile there that they can't do anything with.
Okay. On my soil removal volume tracking sheets in 2023, as Mr. Graybo had talked, we were at 96% completion. On my 2024 sheet for the year 2023, it now says you're at 94 completion as Mr., the township engineer had given us our note on that. That's a 2% change from 2023's totals, which if I did my math correct is 2,101.4 cubic yards. I Googled it because I'm not an expert on mining or truck hauling. A lead holds 22 cubic yards and a train holds 18, is that about right? So when you have a truck with a lead and a train, you're at about 40 yards that get hauled out at a time cubic yards? Is that about right?
Yes.
So if the lead and the train together hauls roughly 40, 42 cubic yards, that's at least 50 trucks that were overcounted to change this 2%.
Can I clear something up before you move on?
Sure.
So when we track our volumes, it's based right off of our sales. Right off the truckload, right off our sales. That's where our donation comes in as well. When the engineers and the surveyors, they do it by drone, they do it by GPS and shoot the ground, that they're measuring an earth change. During the earth change, when you scoop up that dirt, it swells 20 or 25 to 35% when it goes in the truck. So if you go a couple of years of our volumes and the truck volumes, it's gonna show a little bit heavy compared to what the engineers are gonna show on the in-place or neat volume of in-place. So that's why that volume shrunk after 2024, that was based directly off of the engineers' volumes on the in-place yards, earth change yards.
Then how do I know if any of these other years have changed with shrunkage or?
They have, absolutely.
I guess I don't have data on that, so I, you know, not sure about that. I guess if you can overcount, can you undercount?
It's based on, there's, yeah, there's no real scientific. Every material that we dig, if it's a real clay-based sand, it's not gonna swell as much as a real fluffy gravelly sand. So wherever we're digging, that swell or that fluff, we call them in the business, changes. So wherever we're digging, that swell or that fluff, we call them in the business, changes. The allowed, so-called allowed volume that's on the plans is an earth change volume. Basically, you were here, we took it to here, that cross-section is X amount of cubic yards. The sheets that we provide showing our export is truck yards. It's always gonna be a little bit heavier than the earth change yards.
But I'm seeing a 10% wiggle room here between the 20 and 30%. And that's why you're so close to being at your 100%.
Of the first design, the engineers haven't taken account of the earth change for whatever reason on the RV resort.
I'm not following that at all.
Back in 2019, we got approved for our reuse to be the RV resort.
So that means you could make the hole bigger?
That means that I can't put RVs on a 33% slope like was designed for the houses. I had to flatten it out. The pond is not getting, it's changing a little bit due to design, but the earth change-
Wait, but it's changing in which way? Getting bigger?
It's a little bigger.
The hole is getting bigger than, I mean?
Right, because I can't, you'd have to compare the two plans. I mean, I went through all this six years ago, got approved, unfortunately weren't on the board to see the changes. By the woods, was gonna be a big rock cliff for the houses. I can't put that big rock cliff in and have kids playing on it. That had to get laid back and opened up. That's why a little bit of that woods has to go away, and the volume of the lake got a little bit bigger. All the way around the whole lake, trailers can't sit on a 33% slope, that had to get flattened out. So the grades at the lake, well, area, remain the same. As you go towards the outside properties, they lowered, that's the dirt you see on the east side that we're digging out now. And it's all clay, it's not even sand, but I'm hauling it away, not making any money on it, but I have to move it to get these grades to the right level.
What do you do for your next inspection, and who determines that?
I'm assuming the board. That it's open anytime, anybody wants to come out and, Eugene knows that, and anybody that knows, the township can come out and do that. It's just a six-month to eight-month process to have the engineers do it. So in the grand scheme of things, out of, you know, 2 million yard change, we're at 95,000 right now from year to date, it's pretty insignificant as far as going out and checking every year, you're not gonna see it.
I guess I just have a, I'm just, I'm buying into the guess. Your garageage out fee, when is that bill due?
It's not a fee, it's a donation. That was never a requirement. We offered it back in 2001 or whenever we did it, but it wasn't a fee, it was a donation.
Okay, so when is that, is that donation doesn't have anything on it, it's just?
Do most donations have to be?
I'm just asking, I mean?
It sounds like you're asking, is there something?
Well, I'm just asking because when I looked at the checks, because they gave us copies of the checks, and one was paid in February 21 to 24, and now last year was paid in 8/27 or 25, and that was six months difference, and I just wasn't sure. I guess I, in having read through a lot of this stuff last year, I guess I never saw that word donation in the papers that I had read.
Typically, we always brought that check when we paid for our renewals in February, annually. And then in 2024, from February till November, we went through this whole process. So if we didn't bring it in in February, probably brought it in in November, but we mailed it out sooner.
Okay. Mr. Grebel, I mean, you called us a donation too, is that how you would refer to it?
Ms. Rossio, Commissioner Rossio, I would look at the history of this, look at the entire statistical pattern of the information. In my eyes, personally, I would consider it a donation. Any other thing that you're requesting stating that they have a bill due, you're insisting that they pay a penance for things they sell within the township. We do not, nor does any other community require anyone to pay a penance for sales. It would be no different than if we forced Rossios to pay 5% on every dollar they sold. So we have to be very, very careful.
Oh, no, I'm just curious because of them, why do we haven't pay a donation anyway?
They made a decision when this was done, long before you or I was in this board or in this process. Ms. Churchy was here, and they decided that they wanted to make a donation to the veteran of the community, and it was very clear that their donation was being sent to Park and Rec strictly for Park and Rec development and opportunity, absolutely nothing towards-
Okay, thank you for the clarification, thank you. Okay. And when does your permit expire? Would, do you have a date for when your permit expires? Your mining permit?
I always thought it was in February, but last year going through all this, they said it was January, or December 31st.
So 2020-
It's an annual rate.
So you're getting the permit for what year right now?
2026.
2026. So your permit expires?
The end of the year of every county year.
Okay. So your permit hasn't expired yet, is what I'm asking, because normally it usually came, you know, March or April, and this is the latest that you've ever come.
We did that when everybody was a little slower, it was just kinda, it worked out back then.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions to comment on?
The only thing I'd like to-
It shut off for you.
I'd like to have Mr. Pipersak go through anything else that was brought up that hasn't been mentioned. I think we pretty well covered, because it was mostly the east side, and then-
I heard-
When you started, you know, developing the, you know, the RV park, kind of addressed the issues that the residents did bring up. You know, there was issues managing the low water.
Right.
Unfortunately, that's everywhere.
Yeah.
It's because of lack of rain, but-
The water level in our pond is actually, I think, within six inches of our normal level. They may be noticing it because there's nothing flowing out like it normally is with the, with the heavy rainfall, but we have stakes all around that pond, and I think I showed a few of the commissioners when we did the walk, that there is a cutoff valve that we can, we can isolate it if we, we monitor that water pretty closely, and it hasn't changed more than six inches, even with this dry weather.
And have any of the, like, the monitoring wells, have they changed at all? I haven't heard.
Yeah, nothing that the alarms have set, so.
Okay. They're set on alarms?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I thought, so. Do you remember how many there were?
Three, I believe.
Three?
Yeah, one on the east, one at the southwest, and one at the northwest.
Okay, thank you.
And then as far as, you know, there's a lot of talk about finishing and stuff, we're digging out that east side, like I mentioned before, I wanted to get the north and the east to grade. I can actually then build, you know, a stone road, get some stuff set, and get plants planted. Might go a little ways to reconciling these people's concerns, that we're gonna walk away when they actually see stuff get planted and stuff, progress towards that, but I have to move that material first.
So I guess everyone's fixated on the 96%. You're obviously very close. This renewal, and this, you may not realize, but this renewal is just for up to that 4% grant. Because I know you said there was a, in 2019, when you redid it, there was an added volume that's not being looked at here. So do we know, like, is this renewal just counting up to that 100%?
I was under the assumption that we were going towards that new volume, ever since that new reuse plan was enacted. I've been probably four years now with the attorney and the planner and stuff trying to get verbiage where that new reuse plan is in the contract. I think we're close now, real close. But, yeah, we have that 4% to go to that, to that first line.
Do you have an idea in a timeframe in which you would be looking to be complete? Because I think that's the main thing we heard here today. I mean, I know it's not very easy, it was a one-year plan, we're in 26, but I mean, I know you have to have a rough idea.
It was never a one-year plan, it was a two-year plan, and it just renewed so we could be stopped if things went awry. If you, if you really went back and looked at the history, the first three or four years were, I mean, incredible, volume went out. Them years they were building M53 expressly, they use a lot of material. If we had projects like that, that took that kind of material, then it would go real fast. We had, it's pretty average year, I guess we're at 95,000 up to, from January 1st to the day, we had a few more weeks left of this year, so we'd be close to that 100,000 mark. Septic sand was a big seller this year, which was good for you guys, because that's local, small, you know, houses going up for septic fields. We just need growth in roads and houses and material to go faster. We're fairly the closest one, so if there's any building, they're gonna see us, so, and we're price competitive, I don't think people are gonna go elsewhere, so we're trying to get rid of it. As far as timing, if it's 100,000 a year, we probably still have eight years left of that area, if it picks up, hopefully it'll be faster.
That's all I have. Anybody else wish to share?
I think you just said, but what was the original timeframe?
So originally, if I, I wasn't a whole lot part of this, I just got out of college by this, like, they gave us a fire permit, then it was a renewal every, every year originally. And I think the, they, they did that because they knew after fires we'd be starting into water, and they wanted to have that re, kind of, out, so to say, that if there was problems to arise, we'd be coming back for renewal every year, if there was major issues with wells and whatnot. So once we got into the water and they were able to look at it every year, we could get in our annual renewal. Going into it, I think it had 10 or 12-year timeframe on the phases going around there.
Wait, just blew out of my head. Mr. Grabba, sorry.
I'll try and do my best. I'm not the planner or the engineer, but I'll try and do my best.
So over the timeframe from the last time we met with the residents today, has there been interaction between the township and the project, making sure that their complaints were being satisfied, and, you know, is there monitoring being done out of this facility?
So as the planning commission is aware, and the full board is aware, they have in fact had inspections, I want to say last year, we just did a full compliance inspection that team back group, and that was several thousands of dollars to do, I want to post probably 20 grand to have those inspections done, that TESIA actually paid for. If you're asking some of the questions I think you might be asking, Commissioner, written complaints, we have none. We have no proof of wells going dry. We have none of these things that we hear people talking about. You know, I was kind of shocked at some of the statements that were made, just listening, because, you know, we, the supervisor's office, get the complaints, we review these complaints and we address them. Each time we've had a complaint through them or towards them, we do reach out either through our engineer, the planner, or the supervisor's office. We are not seeing, you know, some of these things, I was shocked at, Commissioner, but as it comments that were made. We are seeing a lot of interesting things back and forth, and, you know, once again, we've had this business operational for going into 26 years here, and I'm reading the history and understanding the history. They've been a relatively decent neighborhood for their community. You know, people talk about the tax base, talking about the raping of the property, the land, and so on, but we have to be very careful with those words, because this is an operational business that has the right to do the operation that they are doing at this point. The township, the board, the planning commission has went through, we have all the documentation from their folks, the sand, gravel, experts that go in and do these measurements. You know, I've always heard about the fluff, never really understood, it's not my task or daily work, but when you do have these sale volumes, and we all have noticed, housing was way down, people aren't building, road construction, these things are down. So is it gonna take an extended period of time? That's their choice, that's not, you know, we, the township, are going to say, you need to close because you aren't selling enough material, nor do we have the right to tell them, you need to increase your donations to us because we want more money. That's a very, very bad slope for us to step into, and absolutely illegal. We can talk to many of the neighboring communities of many of the people that went to prison for that. And I can sit in front of you as somebody that spent many years putting those folks in those prisons for doing exactly that. So with that, I'll bring it back to the board, remind you that we do have all the documentation here, there is a process, there is an item, there are requests, they have been working on this new project since 2019, that has been in front of the planning commission, was stalled out with the board, there was COVID, there was a lot of things, there's a lot of moving parts. As far as your concerns, we don't have the documentation that showing we have 20 wells that went dry. We don't have contamination. We don't have proof that they're dumping anything into these areas. As stated earlier, in this process and procedure, it does not stop them from bringing in dirt or selling topsoil. They have a right to sell these products within their property, or that comes from their property, excuse me. And that's just the items that I have read myself. I don't speak for the planner or the engineer on that whatsoever.
Well, just in listening, it sounds like the residents thought this would be a five-year plan, and then there'd be these houses, and it would be developed and done. And absolutely, you know, things have not always gone smoothly, and that time extends, but we're at 26 years of these people, you know, next door to this operation, and you're talking, you think, eight more years before, if a developer was wanted to put a mold there, they had that man take, because you're saying it's not the fact you can do it, it's that you can't sell it?
No, I can't move the material to get it to the grades that were proposed to build it.
Because you're not selling it?
Yeah, selling enough of the same.
Is that truly the, the issue of the township, if he's not able to sell it? I mean, it seems like we need to come up with some kind of compromise here, that, no offense, but that you build this, they can be done with it, however that happens, but eight years sounds like an incredibly, I mean, you're getting at a 34-year project that these people are living next to, and that is that- to and that is that the building they were sold. Thank goodness all all happened. So a way to get this project completed and I just this yearly, yes, just renewing the permit just seems seems wrong. You know, you it's not like this project for your business is a regular store, it's, you know, it it has a lot of detriment to the people around it that, um, and I'm sure you try your very best not to.
To do that, well, yeah, I was celebrated, obviously.
I went out there and inspected it with you, I thought that you're you were trying to do your best.
Yeah, um, not to not to change the subject and stuff too, but, um, I don't know if you follow Lansing Hologics and stuff or not, they they're getting real close to taking over these sand gravel bits themselves because sand and this material for construction is becoming so scarce that it's a natural resource that not every place has. They want to ensure that it's viable, I guess. We'll see whatever happens with it, we've talked about it for years, but I know that if that ever happened, then you guys will basically be at their mercy. We're trying to work with him, obviously. Yeah, we we came in originally with a hundred acre lake and on it seventeen piece of property, you know, we wanted everything we can get. We went to the houses, then we seen that, you know, we knew our our main company built subdivisions, we see it, we see it, everything, you know, what sells every day. And then up this way, that market unless you're over only one fifty three way, you just can't sell five, six hundred thousand dollar houses or houses like they're around this lake, so we we opted for the RV resort. At the backing of the county commissioner, actually, he was, you know, it's been the only, still would be the only RV park in McComb County, so he was pretty excited to get this going too. He brought it up in a couple of his state and county addresses and he actually just called and asked how close we were because he wanted to bring it up again this year. Unfortunately, I can't say it's going to be open next year, so.
No, maybe eight more years and that just.
So I guess the only thing, you know, to to make a statement on that, I mean, if you want to shut it down and not renew the permit, now you have an uncompleted piece of property, you have a hole in the ground, you have nothing happening, you're not allowing him to do business, so what does that do for us moving forward? Now it's a liability, now it's a shutdown wasteland, which you're claiming it is now. So you're you're stopping progress, I get it, you're playing, I get the timeframe is an issue, but okay, next next scenario, you want them to take all of the material out, you want them to start building roads, making grade, to do that, he has to make piles. Piles is a huge issue here, we don't want piles, he's not allowed to make piles, so you tell the guy hurry up and dig, but don't make piles because we don't want piles, but get it done, but don't do it. So I I hear you guys, but logically, hearing this and going through this for three-ish years I've been on the board, I mean, I built a house here during COVID and it took me two and a half years, never planned on that, I had to keep getting extensions and and doing that, and it was a pain in the butt, and that's a lot smaller scale, but, you know, most people here have done these things, have businesses, you know, when things are unforeseen and, you know, you gotta look at it from every angle, I mean, I get it, this project's been going on almost as long as I've been alive, so I can see how that's frustrating. By the time it's done, I'm going to be able to, so, um, I don't agree that it's a great timeframe, but also shutting it down doesn't get RV parks, it doesn't generate revenue, it doesn't get taxed dollars, so I don't see how shutting it down benefits the township either.
No, I agree.
So that's that's just my my statement. But you gotta bring it down and get it to the right grade. Again, if he's going to go in there right now and put rocks and pads, thirty three degree slope, then you bring campers in there, they're falling into the lake, now you got lawsuits, you got campers in there, you know what campers have? Sewage, gas, diesel, all the contaminants in the water that we don't want, so, you know, you have to understand the building process, grading and things like that as well to to say you you just develop it well. It's not at a point to develop it, I think we all agree with. So, Commissioner Rose.
I just want to make something clear, I never asked for an increase for a donation because I didn't know it was a donation to begin with, so I don't know where Mr. Very Most Common came from about donations. Number two, it says you have, you were talking about eight years left. In the last eight years, you removed twenty three or got up to twenty three percent of your total. So if you only have four percent left in the last eight years, you've dug out twenty three percent, how can you even think it could go eight years?
Because that four percent is on the first plans volume, not the RV resort volume.
So that's increased by how much then?
I don't have the numbers in front of me. Fifty percent maybe?
Fifty percent?
Holy, wow. Am I complaining, am I concerned from last year with all this testing and everything that got done? When it came time to dig those bore holes, you remember those bore holes? There was three bore holes dug. And you said your property is how big?
I guess I don't, about a hundred seventeen acres.
And those bore holes were clustered, the three bore holes were right in a small little cluster.
Yeah, they were actual material that we brought in, they're the soils engineers felt it wasn't necessary to dig holes in virgin ground, there'd be no contaminants in virgin ground.
Your project isn't all virgin ground, I mean, there's stuff that was being hauled in, there's, I mean.
I'm hauling clay out, whatever you're hauling in, it doesn't make any business sense. You know how hard it is to find places to dig clay? I mean, luckily we have landfill in the area that took the first batch of ground, but.
And all those people that you mentioned that are so excited about this trailer park, yourself included, you don't live in Lennox.
I am a little awfully close, my grandparents grew up in Richmond, were from the area, we've been here for a long, long time.
But you don't live here now. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Why are we getting these reports giving us ninety six percent and these numbers if this is garbage? If this is not what's agreed to, shouldn't we be seeing reports based on if you made a deal to increase the volume that reflects that? I don't understand that.
Commissioner, not to be rude, but I didn't make any deals, this was done back in twenty nineteen. The the planning commission worked it back in twenty nineteen to adjust this to the RV Park Center and so on and so forth. So those are things that were done, they have been compliant every year at the requirements or every couple of years, every time they go through, uh, hoops and hurdles to be inspected and reviewed and so on, so we didn't, the administration that's here now did not make any deals prior or within.
I think you're missing the point of the question, sir, I'm sorry you got misspoke. Why are the reports that we review now?
That's the current volume from the original, the original program that was put together. You have to finish one to move to the next, is what I understand. I am not the planner or the engineer, as I stated again, I'm only here to read their documents and I clearly read the emails that they opened themselves wide out to all the planning commissioners to reach out to them if they had any questions prior to, and all of these reports were part of that document that went to all of you.
I I'm reading that stuff, I'm just not understanding, so you're saying, once that project is done, then we're going to get a new set of reports on a new set of volume and then time?
You're asking me to make a statement on something that is not part of my thing, I'm reading in the information. I am not the engineer or the planner, but if you read into this, it's very clear, there is the RV park that is part of this that was agreed to back in twenty nineteen. That was the change from the original, moved over to the RV, from the the buildings, the homes, it was moved to this RV park estate. So that's back in twenty nineteen, they made the adjustments and changes, they are finishing up the original. Your documents are the original, these numbers are off of that original program that was set.
And that's why I need to get an answer from you because that's not your daily work, but I guess for for me tonight, I don't think I can make a decision, I I want to understand better what the new setup involves.
But they're asking for a renewal tonight, they're not asking you to to make decisions about things that is the next phase. That phase was already done with, um, the planning commission back in twenty nineteen. This is the original, that is what you're looking at, this is the original phase. Ms. Churchy was part of the other original group that when they did the original mading permits, so you have to close one out in order to move to the next.
So is that why you're thinking this is? What, how was your timeframe to finish listing?
So I honestly, I've been for the last four or five years in the same mindset as you, why are we still using the original volumes when I'm starting to construct the new elevations? Because when I turned in the elevation plans to engineer to review, we went off of the approved plans for the RV resort, that was the latest approvals from planning commission, part of that planning commission approval, had a grading plan out, um, that was one of the major, major components to that approval. So, um, I've always asked the engineer, you know, why don't we move to these these other volumes now? And he said, well, we haven't reached the first one yet. I, yeah, me and my old work and awful ones when I'm grading for new, but that's kind of same answer I got.
So then to this particular plan, how far out are you on that, based on what we see, is that two years away?
Yeah, probably, so I should reach, um, the westernly edge of the pond completion next year, be real close. I'm kind of leaving the road access, I mean, it's just construction, the constructability, if I drop that right now, the trucks have trouble getting out, so that entrance, we talked about it when we did our did our tour, that entrance area will be the last, the drop to grade just for basic construction processes. But like I said, I've been working on the rest of the site to get it to grade so I can get started on trees and everything else.
So then if I understand this right, the additional six years that you're estimating would be based on the RV volumes that were added, that is fifty percent of the original, how is it possible to take that number, fifty percent of it, and get it done in six years?
And 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 the fifty percent was a, I got the volumes in front of me, the friends in front of me, it was an estimate. I have a feeling, once those get calculated, we'll probably be closer than than we think, because like I said, we're working on the east side now, north side is done, northwest corner is all clay, that's going to stay up, that's where the courthouse and stuff is going to be be going, so there's no more excavation in that area. So the volumes, you know, may be off or not, it just has by eye, knowing what we get done every year, that's where my year estimate comes from.
So then my other part is this, if the if the work that you're doing is beyond now the scope of the original project, because you're working, that original project had certain areas to do and certain grades and we've, you're not doing that anymore that particular plan, you're doing the RV plan, but yet we're looking at a report each year that doesn't include what he's actually doing.
It's based off of volume, not off the project, and that's what they're saying is what the engineer would probably be able to confirm if it was here, is that once he hits a hundred percent, then they would calculate that and it was okay, that phase was done. And if he's saying fifty percent, based off of just general assumptions here, maybe he only needs twenty five percent more to get it to the RV level, but the thing is, it's based off of volumes, which is calculated and tracked, so once he hits a hundred percent, then he has up to whatever was approved before us that he would be able to dig, but if he doesn't need to do that to get to the site plan, then I would assume they wouldn't take extra out.
Right, and, you know, with those volumes, I think the original lake was proposed for forty feet, don't quote me on that, I'm just an assumption, well, we're we're only allowed or our equipment only allows us to get so deep, um, and I know we haven't reached that depth. Um, I just looked at the last year's calculations, they were on the sonar and the lake depths, and it shows that we're still a couple of feet heavy through the whole lake, I can't get that volume out, that's, that is what it is. So, um, volumes are drawn in pencil that are really easy to track, out in the field it's, you know, maybe not quite as perfectly accurate, especially if you're sitting in inside under the water, the slopes and everything on top of the ground will be, be red.
Um, for me, I I, nothing against you, I I'm not going to vote in the affirmative, I I think I need a year from the engineer. And I it seems like if if there is this whole second volume program, that we should be seeing that report along with this report, it doesn't make sense to me at all that, because if you give the, if you gave us specs from the original and he's not performing those specs anymore, he's performing the new specs, but he's still got the old permit. It seems like those two things need to come into some kind of
So Commissioner, just, just to, again, I mean, we're here to vote on a renewable permit to allow him to continue his operation, we're not here to dictate what he's doing or what phase of the project he's in, and that communication is ongoing with the township. And when he hits a hundred percent, there has to be some kind of change, we're going to have to see that information. And I would assume we wouldn't be able to meet on that again or go to Steve or Sirmed and get that information when he hits a hundred percent, but we're proving him to continue going to what is approved right now. We're not dictating how many trees he's planting, what side of the properties equipment's sitting on, I mean, we're here for renewable permit. And we have a lot of questions and we have a lot of issues, but to get to the point, we've been here for years and Smed and Steve were every day, everybody knows this is going to happen, so why are we not doing our research and our due diligence and doing the stuff ahead of time instead of sitting up here speculating and talking to people that aren't here? So we need to just stick to the facts, stick to what the request is, and we need we need to move on, because at this point we're just speculating things and the people to answer those are not here. So, I mean, this is this is kind of getting unproductive at this point.
I mean, for me, I was coming here expecting to just renew it. I, did I miss something last time we met that there is, um, a whole secondary permit or secondary volumes that will come out of here? I don't remember that.
I was aware that went from houses to the RV park and the volume changed, I do remember that from our slide trip and and I I do recall that.
By fifty percent?
I don't think there was a number and he just threw out an arbitrary number because we put him on the spot, again, it could be twenty five, it could be fifty. And again, we can get that stuff from the clients, from the office in which we are employed, and we can find that out, right now, we don't have access to that, so let's not speculate.
I have all the pictures of those, if you want me. This is not the question and answer session, but back to you, Commissioner, just once again, both the planner and the engineer, the engineer, September seventh, twelve thirty one PM, clearly states, if you have any questions or concerns, to please contact me at your convenience, and I will tell you, Smed is very good at the replies. That is the same statement as Mr. Casement, the planner. But anytime, anytime we have a question or issue, as staff members for our community, they respond to us immediately.
I agree.
So it needs to be, you know, and we see this across all over the place, these are things that are sent out in advance, there's questions, radio silence, the phone doesn't ring, but all of a sudden, when everybody's here. But all of a sudden, when everybody's here, now you've got to stop the barrel of rolling forward.
Again, I didn't have any questions coming into the meeting. I read my packet. I thought basically we had all this settled last year. I honestly don't remember understanding or grappling, I guess, that there is a whole nother.
Which was done in 2019.
Yes, but it's not reflected. I, if there's anything, I, I think the whole project to me would be reflected in this report. Of the percentages.
And that's a cement.
Or maybe there should be a secondary report.
That's a cement question, you know, I mean, that's an engineer question. Then we could have a whole group on and put together, so you guys have all your planning questions, all those things, at a different project or an open class session. But in this particular case, as the chair has clearly said, this is a renewal for this year. This is a project of what's going on. If the planning commission wants to move forward with reviewing the future stuff, then they need to set that forward and bring in those gentlemen, go through everything for a relearning or a retraining or knowledge-based information. But that's not your option this evening for that.
And also why the permit, like you stated, is for one year. So if something happens, if he breaks the rules, if he does not do what he's supposed to do, we can stop him. He could just go to the board, I assume, and ask for a five-year permit so he doesn't have to go through this every year. But we do get the chance to do this. We have done it. Some of us have done this many times. And yet we're still here saying the same things. So again, I think we either need to really address this outside of this meeting with the township, with the facts. And if they're doing something wrong and it's proven and it's there, then you can go about that. But we don't have that jurisdiction here in this meeting.
I mean, for me, I don't know, I don't think the man's doing anything wrong per se. I don't have any proof of that. I don't question that. I'm questioning that I truly did not understand that this project wasn't at 96% done and we're going to be finished with this in X amount of years and not a whole nother project that comes down the pipe after that. That's the part that eluded me, obviously. Did everybody else understand it that way?
I'm in agreeance with you, but I also have a question. So I just wanted to make sure from the supervisor's office that none of those people sitting out here in the audience ever came and talked to you about this in, in this last year about the TJ Enterprises?
I have no written complaints with a violation that was verified other than illegal photographing or drone usage.
Is there anything else on the table?
No, you guys can make a motion. I know where I stand.
Well.
I would like this to be further, maybe at the next meeting or the meeting after that to understand more. Because I'm truly confused on it. I would like to understand it better and what the timeframe should be. I, I think that's what these people are looking for is.
Sure. Well, let's get ahold of the planner or submit on our time and request these things and get educated so we can speak intelligently here and not speculate. Because we're drawing this out. We're saying a lot of random, absurd, not politically correct things here. And it's, it's not productive. So we need to be professional and we need to just follow the flow. And you're supposed to keep emotion and personal preference out of things and do what's best for the township and the law. Took an oath when you took this position to do all of that. That's all I'm asking. So.
Are you asking me that?
I'm just stating facts out loud.
Well, I feel like that you're questioning my.
I'm not, I'm just saying we all need to make sure we're doing what we agreed to do when we took these positions. That's all I'm asking everybody to do.
Well, for me, I have to make a decision based on.
And you can vote and reflect your decision off your knowledge. But again, you need to come prepare on time and have the questions that you need to do. So with that, we're not talking about this anymore. So we're going to move on to sit public comment on agenda items. So if anyone else has anything they'd like to say, again, you have a three-minute obligation. And you can do so.
I just wanted to present a couple of things that were not really correct. Back in 2023, 96% of the dirt had already been removed. I don't understand why right now it's at 95% of the dirt has been removed. The other thing is if you go down Peshawk Road and you look from 32 to 31 and you look on the left and you see the dirt piled up 15 feet high, higher than the road, 15 feet above the road level, that's not appropriate. That's dirt that shouldn't be there piled up 15 feet above it. It's not five feet or eight feet. It's way above the fence that's set over there. And it's thousands and thousands of yards of dirt piled up. There are a lot of things that aren't really, don't go with some of the things that were said here today. So like removing 101,000 yards of dirt in a year. Then how do they have so much dirt right now? Because they're bringing more dirt in as they remove the dirt, just different type. But I think that they should have hold, put on the digging. They should start to evaluate how they're going to develop it into the park. The housing development, I have all the pictures of all the housing plans. I have all the pictures of the development of the trailer that we're going to go around. And I can show them to anyone if they want to. But none of that has happened. It's been 10 years since they canceled the idea of putting the houses in there and they're going to put the trailers in. And nothing's happened, except more and more dirt has been dug and sold. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wish each one of you commissioners, if you could, drive down Peshawk Road first thing in the morning. Stand on Peshawk Road. A burr was supposed to crawl to 14 feet when he came in. So that's twice my height. When you stand on Peshawk Road, there's a 30-foot pile of top dirt there. How can you say, "I'm in compliance, we didn't violate nothing"? Yes, we don't have written statements here, but how many times have we been in here talking the same thing? And we just caught them tonight lying about the dirt. Each one of you can drive down there. You can take a tape measure and see it's go 15 feet. Then the next thing, all of a sudden this back corner by the woods that was approved is all being changed. Who approved it? The planning commission had approved it. Who approved it? And they admitted that they're changing the plans. Don't the township, the supervisor office, have to approve change of plans? It all back down to, planning commission starts, then to the board. So he's admitted they've changed the plans with no approval from the planning commission. We need to sit back, look at what they're doing, bring it to aspect. You give them another year's permit, we will be back here in 12 months saying the same thing. Then all of a sudden, they're going to come up with a well planned, instead of an RV park, they're going to make it a bicycle park. And the board will approve it. We fought this to last time saying, "No, we have to stop this." The board approved it. Now we're here again doing the same thing. Please listen to the residents of that area, their wishes and wants. Not fiber tax, I don't have nothing against them. But the township is not looking at what the residents want. Yes, everybody's confused. They are even confused at what plan they're working on, what the architects say it can come up with. Everybody's confused. So let's stop, straighten it up, and then go. But like I asked, supervisors, assistant supervisors, every one of your board members should come out past road and see what we see and what we're telling them. And I know the past two months have been several complaints written to the township about that dirt.
Mr. Escher, I'm going to ask you right now. Your office has zero written complaints. If you have one, bring it in and you can call me a liar, override your time, Dr. Escher.
Steve.
Thank you.
Code and force to pass.
Written complaints?
Written complaints.
You said they were given to the supervisor.
Well, they're code and force, you're supposed to take.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Eisenbaum from 68111 Peshawk Road. You find me, ask Mr. Boyd, how many complaints have I cleared?
So have counted, 10.
Seven, eight, 10. And you went through them. And you told me that, and the complaints were, that they were all on top soil there. Where I could see, and I took pictures of him standing in my driveway on Peshawk Road with the trucks being dumped right in front of my driveway. Mr. Boyd went through it, he said he went through, like I stated earlier, 300 pages of stuff. And he come back and said, "They can do that, but they're not allowed to sell topsoil." That's what he told me at the last board meeting when I talked to him. So I don't know where the information goes when I file online on the township website that the supervisor's office doesn't know anything about.
Right here, right now. Mr. Boyd processes it. If he finalizes it, completes it, there's no reason for it to be moved forward if it's been 12 weeks.
But if there's complaints filed, it needs to be stated that a complaint was filed and resolved.
That's why.
But to say there's no complaints when I file eight, 10 of them is, is a total false statement.
But you're complaining that people are putting stuff, I'm not going to argue back and forth, but they are committed based on, and clearly heard, they moved dirt.
And he told me that and I stated that earlier. The other thing I just found, I thought was very curious today, that pile of topsoil outside my driveway has got to be 20, 30 feet higher. They had a loader up there today pushing it down. Yeah, everything run through the screener. So it's more than 15 foot tall, Isaac.
Thank you.
It's Rebecca Washington from Peshawk. Okay, first of all, there were some complaints about not being written. I actually did a pamphlet with photos when there were those cement pillars, the stuff that were on. You guys weren't here, but it was years ago. And I did a folder and went around to the different neighbors. And it was submitted, it was brought up at one of the meetings. So there were complaints. As far as the well, it wasn't 20, but there was a well. Shirley Boss was alive at that time when she came in here. She's unconscious, she's deceased. And I do remember her writing it. Maybe you weren't there, I know you were there. But I do remember that because Shirley, I do remember Shirley well. But Mr. Kipsetek is a businessman. And I agree, he's a miner, he's digging well. He wants to get as much as he can, make the buck of digging. That's why the housing plan changed to an RV. Why? Because he's already gone deep enough, so let's go wider, let's make it more shallow. I do understand that. I own lakes, mining gold, mining lakes. I can't put an RV around it because they're deep down, they're cut. That's how it is. Go to my lake, it's a sharp drop. We had to have it, we had to have it graded. And you know what? We were able to grade it. My beach was graded. It didn't take eight years. They can do a lot. You can bring in bulldozers, you can do, you can make an intrarvi, won't take eight years. That's because he still wants to mine, he still wants to make money. He's a businessman. That's his job. So that is what he's going to do. He's going to make it over eight years. But the point is, if he wants to do it, you need to have a plan of why are you making this long? Can you have done it? I bet I could get a builder to come in and probably say, "Yeah, we can make this into an RV overnight." And there are RV parks in McComb. We have friends at home and I know they've been looking at them. And it is something, but the reason they changed from the housing to the RV is because he wanted to make it wider. And I think it's the most sand or whatever you want to mine over there. He's a businessman and we can't fault him for that. He wants to make money and that's what he is. As far as donations, kind of interesting that he made donations. I'd like to see where those donations, I'd like to make sure they were put into this park. Because I know finally, over the last few years, he finally did something. Being first, having kids in Lennox for years, that was a very sad part. Putting the ice cream. So all those donations, I'd love to see where they did go to. Because it's nice if you're waiting for 26 years, I was sure a lot of donations put in. Couldn't be doing it for 26 years. It's very nice if you're here. So I'd like to see where they go.
Okay.
That was just done recently. What about the last 26 years? My kids are 24 now. They weren't there when there was a year growing up. This started 26 years ago when I moved out here. But that's all I have to say. And there were written complaints. You weren't here, but there were. And I had even a folder of where I had photos taken of the rocks and stuff. And I brought it to you and I did a little folder. So we do have pictures. Yeah, they're dig, but not really a dig, but they're taken from the sand on the road. Because they are older, a poth. And I do have this, and I can do a poth. So that's all I have to say. I understand his business, but I do agree, you should be working with the plans to the end, not something from 26 years ago. You should have an end date. And that's your job. You have a known, hey, what was the.
Your three minutes has expired, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Great size in 68111 Peshawk Road. I have a question. If you consider illegal videoing and someone submitting their complaint, how are we supposed to submit the evidence that we'd like you to investigate? If you're calling it illegal videoing?
Ma'am, I'm not hearing it. Are there?
We, we're not supposed to.
Then why are you calling it illegal?
I have my timeframe to speak to you.
My second question is, the delay in length in this process was because you can't move the material. Yet then he turned around and said that there's such a shortage in the state of this material that now the state is going to take it over. Now that is very contradictory. That's the way this whole process has been. And will continue until somebody sets their foot down.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We'll move into item number seven, which is unfinished business. Do you not have any today? Eight is new business, TJ Enterprise LLC, or slide E 190603100002, also known as 3268032 Mile Road.
Just so what people on, on commission understand, we would be voting on the just special land use extension. We did the, the mighty period was mentioned, but that is issued strictly by the board. And back in 2019, whenever their plans changed from homes to an RV park, I was not on the commission at the time. So I have no, no information how that was done or what was done. But my understanding is we are strictly voting tonight to continue their operation, which I'd rather see that done than it just let go and not finished. Or it will then end up with like the Washington pit did, straight up and down. And also the one on New Haven Road, that there was no slopes. I would like to see them be able to continue working, move around what they want and get it to the grade that it needs to be for the RV park. If that's what their plans are going to be. if that's what their plans are going to be. But right now, we're just, we're working with the specs from the original special land use. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill. So at this point, I'd be looking for a motion. I think we've all expressed our views and points on this.
Taking everything into consideration. And yes, I know it's been a long time, but I want to see this finished. So I make a motion to grant the one-year extension for the special land use for TJ Enterprises.
And as the planner said, I think we say contingent that they meet all township code.
Correct. Yeah, I guess I meant to say that. Recommend a contingent upon compliance with all township engineering standards and applicable state and federal regulations.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Churchill?
Support.
And I have a support from Commissioner Millard. Can we please get a roll call?
Churchill?
Aye.
Millard?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hello?
No.
Russell?
Nay.
Sutton?
Aye.
Jabar?
Aye.
Motion, Mrs.?
Ayesha. Okay. Now we move to number nine, public comment. Any final words for tonight? Okay. Communications and/or committee reports, supervisors tables, or anything else from the planner or engineer that we need to discuss tonight?
Not this evening. Like as stated from the planner and the engineer, at any point in time, you guys have any questions, comments, or concerns, a number of items are always available. But there is nothing in the headlines coming forward that I have been given to pass on at this point.
All right, thank you. So with that, we're going to skip over the township planner report since we do not have one. Call from the table?
I have a couple of things. I brought this up a few months after I was put on this commission or asked to be on the commission. It was actually on May 22 of 2023. I had talked about having a packet or a pamphlet or something for businesses for when they want to develop in the township. During this pre-application, okay. And Mr. Cassin and also Mr. Saif, if I remember correctly, they were receptive of this process that I thought would be helpful. During the pre-application process, that a new, the new master plan says is ongoing, I believe this packet would be helpful. It has to do with, I've lost my train of thought, about business developers. This could save the township and the business developer's time, litigation costs if it got that far, fees for special meetings, to name a few reasons. Recently, a business came to the trustees' meeting about a sidewalk variance on Grasshut. It was granted, but Russell's equipment asked for a same type of variance and it was denied several years ago. Russell's had to weigh the cost of litigation or delayed opening. They put, we put the sidewalk in. Is this fair and consistent by Lennox Township? This option to put or not put in a sidewalk, if vacant land is on either side of you, should be up to the developer, not inconsistently approved or disapproved by a commissioner or board. It should be spelled out in a previously given requirements packet or guide. Another instance is when AutoZone asked, when it came before the planning commission, they were asked to go above the minimal requirements, if I remember correctly, for their parking lot. And it was the requirements, the extra requirements were asked by Mr. White, Mr. Cassin, and Mr. Saif. Minimal parking lot requirements could also have been in this packet or this booklet. It would have saved a lot of discussion that evening and time. Another example is recently here on 26 Mile Road. We had the developer with his proposal for RV storage. His proposal was an uphill battle on his part. It never should have gotten to the planning commission agenda, in my opinion. Again, it was a waste of time and township money by just, it's just, the master plan says this is ongoing, that you're meeting with these developers prior to, before it comes to the planning commission. And there was a disagreement that evening regarding that developer and Mr. Cassin and Mr. Saif. The developer said he met with them and Mr. Saif and Mr. Cassin said they didn't. So I mean, this all should have been handled prior to coming to us. All these extra things raise costs for the developer that are unnecessary. Not just that, but say for Russell's, the sidewalk costs, say, $8,000 to $10,000. The tri-county engineering gets paid, if I have this correctly, 20% of the total cost of the project. So it's to their benefit to have these extra occurrences put on at the time of the developing instead of being postponed if it was possible for the sidewalks. So I don't, there is no incentive in order to not have this happen. Are you following what I'm trying to say here?
Yeah. Paul?
Okay.
So I guess, can I ask, I mean, if you made that request and they said it was not, they've never given you any feedback.
And I'll take responsibility. I should have followed up on this.
Yeah, I guess I'm just curious if they've done anything or not.
No, that's, and I, you know, I know Mr. Grave always been saying about, you know, calling or calling, emailing them if we have any questions. I guess if this was a planned vacation on both of their parts, maybe it would have been nice to have had an email from either of them or both of them saying that they wouldn't be here tonight. You know, that would have been helpful as well. But I guess what I'm getting at is the master plan keeps talking about this pre-application process that is ongoing. And I keep seeing instances where it's not. And I guess that needs to be dealt with. Also, jumping to another topic is, has anybody thought about a traffic light at 29 in Grasshut? Recently, on my travels up and down Grasshut, I keep seeing gravel trucks or the garbage trucks coming up the 29 mile road with rolling stops. I see them pulling out in front of vehicles. I don't know if there's been any talk about a traffic light.
Can you please silence me? Well, this is the third time. It's unprofessional.
Well, I'll tell you this, it's hooked to my alarm and it does not allow it to be silenced because my sugar's low. And so I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but I cannot silence.
All right, thank you.
So it's just a thought about a traffic light there. And also if it is proposed, also that it have like a 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, no turn on red, you know, to maybe stop the rolling stops and everything. And lastly, I just wanted to give a thank you to the hardworking families in our township, the citizens as well as the business owners who put their trust in the success of our township by taking a chance to buy a home or risk their own money to start a business here in our community. Let us never take their tax dollars and their trust in us for granted.
Thank you. Go ahead.
There's a lot of back and forth about.
Keep turning your mic on so that I can recognize you.
There's a lot of back and forth about whether there were written complaints and this and that. Please bring your stuff with you, your book, what you're doing, so we can see it too as the planning commission. It seems like there is a slight disconnect between you're making complaints to the code enforcement and as long as it's completed, the supervisor's office does not see that. And maybe that's something, even the finished complaints regarding this project. Just so you guys know what the concerns are. Because I agree, you need written information in order to do anything. But it sounds like there is something within the township. Maybe there's a way to communicate those to you as well. And that's all I got.
All right, thanks. Anything else on the table? If not, I'd be looking for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn at 8:10?
A motion from Commissioner Penal.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Millard. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ayesha. He is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.